For the consultant to do the project study report, that to me is what would move this forward.
And if we could bring back the cost for that, so we can actually make that decision.
Is that something that they normally do though themselves?
That's something that they would normally do.
So why don't we then follow through with what we, you know, I had a conversation with Jerry Hill and he was very enthusiastic about the fact that if we need something done and Caltrans says that we can't do it, but you know, we would get some sort of promissory note or something like that. But you would fund it so we could move things forward and hopefully, otherwise there's no guarantee, if you guarantee, guarantee, but.
What, do you mean a promissory?
They would pay us back when they had the funding. They funded their budget cycle and then we would pay for it in current year cash and they would pay no interest. But they would pay us back when the budget cycle matured.
Because their budget.
And so it doesn't hurt for us to pursue that and say, hey, look, we think it's important that we do it now and we'd like, and we're willing to go fund it, but yeah, we'll take your direction, your specs, whatever you guys want to do, but so it's useful for you, but what we want to do is is get paid back portion of it or all of it. And no interest loan, essentially it's a no interest loan, but you have to pay the loan back.
You know, and we're talking about, you know, this report talks about a traffic calming study and you know, also, I guess, I would also say to you that I think it's probably money better spent putting it into a project study report that would hopefully lead to a reduction of lanes. As opposed to doing a lot of studies or traffic calming on the streets, because many times they turn up the academic exercises. I think given what I've heard here today, that it would be good to go out and, and get reset traffic counts. I think that would be helpful. And I also think that as part of the Bike Way Master Plan, it's kind of a first project, I think, to get those class two bike lanes out there. To have the high surprise right there. And that's something that the town, you know, we would do anyway, that doesn't, we're not going to do a traffic calming study to determine that. So, I, I mean personally, that's where I think, you know, would be the best money spent is just, you know, invest the money in getting reset counts. You know, let's keep moving forward with the, with the Bike Way Master Plan. And then I'll talk to Caltrans about developing a scope and getting an estimate of cost of what a project study report would be. Explore with them if they, if that's kind of something they, they would consider is if the town would advance the money and, and but, you know, they put it into a future, you know, whatever their normal budgeting cycle is and, and, you know, go that route.
And we do have Jerry, Jerry Hill's order.
So, a question for Mike. To, would we want to do community outreach for the residents along Selby Lane about the bike lanes? To inform them or is that something we would just do and they'd wake up one morning and go?
Well, well, it's, it's part of the Bike Way Master Plan, you know, there is that outreach and so, you know, hopefully that, you know.
Want to know if they've done that kind of outreach.
Well, first off, there was the.
The survey.
We've done the survey and we've done, and now there's going to, there's going to be a project plan, hopefully, in case he's going to continue to progress. There'll be a project plan and we will have hearings about it. And nothing will get funded until we have a hearing and pay, because it's not going to be under fifteen thousand dollars. So nothing, no one's going to wake up one day and suddenly shazam, it's happened.
Well, I mean, good, yeah.
I think that we can probably send out words to tell them, we are working on it.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, that, that would be a very positive information tool to let the residents know. And then maybe we don't have to wait until Casey gets all his ducks in a row and the final master plan. And we can just, you know, kind of move forward on Selby Lane.
Right, and, and in order for that to be implemented, my, my guess is that there's going to, there is going to be some lane widening required. And the reason being that currently from edge of pavement to edge of pavement is twenty foot feet. And when you stripe a class two bike lane, you know, you want it four to five feet. So then if you take four, four to five feet off of twelve, that only leaves a seven or eight foot traveling, which is not adequate.
That's really reducing the lanes.
It'll slow them down.
Yeah, right.
But, you know, but it, but that is, you know, just logically, that is kind of the idea. I mean, it's, it's going to a school, it seems that would be, you know, really the ideal place.
And there would certainly be neighbor notification and.
Yeah, because when we drove down there, and I think you were, you were still with us when we went down there, I mean, that, that was, that was a, it's kind of a treacherous road.
It's scary.
Driving your bike down.
Yeah.
And, and there are places where the people got the rocks right next to the road and, and, and then, or it's gravel off the road. So if you're there, you pull over, I mean, you're on a bike and you're on gravel, it's, it's kind of white at that time. So, so anyway, yeah, I, for me, I'd rather have you invest the money and ducking, working on the E, the ECR thing. And, and because as, you know, everybody just said, we've been talking about it for years and, and work on that.
And do the traffic.
Yeah, and the traffic.
I agree with that.
My whole thanks for just a second, I know you guys came in late and I didn't get reopened public comments and closed them. Or did you have a public comment on this subject?
I do, please.
Thank you, I do that.
Well, I, I, I think that speed bumps or whatever you want to call them are being given a little short trip. Every community around here has speed bumps and they are affected. They come in different sizes and shapes. Selby Lane has a stop sign about half a mile from El Camino. Another stop sign, another half mile when it gets to the intersection of Selby and Selby. And in between, it's a straight shot. Basically, we'd only need two, two bumps just to, so that cars have to go really slowly. I don't mean bumps that you can sail over at fifty miles an hour. But I, I do believe we could very substantially reduce the rate of traffic flow. But I, like, the rest of the idea is, is people pointed out, traffic does get diverted when people don't like one street, they go to another. But our community has absolutely no speed bumps. And as a, as a long term proposition, this would reduce the amount of overflow from El Camino and other, basically Alameda through our community. And I really think it ought to be given some serious consideration.
Mr. Mayor, just so nobody leaves with false expectations, speed bumps are not legal in California. Because a vehicle like a expecting parents rushing to the hospital or something, you can rip your wheels off. Fire trucks, it knocks the hoses out of the back, so those are not grouped by Caltrans. And regardless of what somebody else might do in their private parking lot, they're not legal on streets, whether they're there or not. Now, there's something out there called a traffic table, which is much more gradual and then you go along and then you come back down. There's also the gradual speed hump, which is not a bump. Those are also, you'll find it in cities, in fact, what you're calling a speed bump is probably a speed hump. Because they're engineered to gradually allow you to flow over. Those also are an emergency route for police cars and fire trucks are going fast. They're not, they're not very well received because they do tear up the cars, so to speak, and the big trucks, especially because those trucks are carrying thousands of gallons of water. And, and so those kinds of things will have other downsides besides, they will slow traffic down, but they do cause problems for emergency vehicles and we may have to make some trade offs there.
Yeah, I think what Ted was talking about was the humps that have the holes in the middle and then the parkers putting up all over the place.
Those are, those.
They're called humps, not bumps.
Yeah, they're humps.
Humps, no bumps.
I didn't intend a specific term, humps, lumps, bumps.
Like the slow things.
And there's speed tables on orange between Valparaiso and San Cruz that are, I think, effective.
Everything.
But what you missed was the report that the Menlo Fire Department, which considers Selby Lane to be an emergency response road, is absolutely opposed to any of them. And they kind of, so that is why you didn't hear a lot of discussion about it here. Because that started the conversation and if, that, that's what I said, if they can kill it, then that seems like the most effective possibility to me to slow traffic down, because I find them very effective.
Well, I think, yeah, but I think, I think the fire district was against chicanes and narrowing the roads and things like that. They, because they've approved and, and my interface with the fire district in the past has indicated that they do agree with those humps that are, that got the holes in the.
The drive through.
Right, the drive through, they don't have an issue with those, I mean, they want to look at them, but they, they will not allow things like what we originally did on Hope Creek Lane, you know, where they have the chicanes and things like that, because then the truck is going, you know, and that's, that's what they're dead set against. But not necessarily other things, but I think what Mike is saying, you know, I've observed too, is that, you know, people slow down and they bump bump over them and then, then there's media step on the accelerator, shoo, and then go to the next one, you slow down and bump. And I think that's the discussion that we've had here a number of times in the past.
Yes.
One, one more, two items, one is, as you know, the, this issue of the traffic light and before this brought from the Traffic Protection Committee. And we concluded we didn't have enough information to be able to have an opinion on it. And so we thought the study was, was a good idea. And we have gotten some additional information from Public Works and from the police about the nature of the accidents and so forth. But we also were concerned about public outreach and so forth. So I, I think the Transportation Committee would support it. One idea that came forth, the figure Louder suggested, which as part, could be part of the study, an option to look at, was if you don't have a light, perhaps you could, for people coming from Selby Lane, turning left on El Camino, there could be a lane dedicated to receive them, that was a limited lane. Where, so they'd really only have to worry about traffic on half the lanes first and then converge with traffic.
Is there not one of those on Selby, there is an Almond Row and there is a Stockbridge.
And on Ole Hondra there is.
Yeah, basically what that is, is kind of a little, little refuge lane where you can, you can turn left and then wait till, yeah. And, and, you know, that's very, I mean, effectively, that's very similar to a two way left turn.
So, I, coming off of Ole Hondra, where I live and crossing, coming to come to these meetings, so I literally, on my back wheels, I hug over that little curb there, just because I want to make sure that I'm snugged up close enough. Because when people leave from Valparaiso and, and coming up El Camino and the, like, they are going fifty miles an hour down from, from Middle Park. Fifty miles, they are going, shh, shh. It is scary because it, yeah. And because the next stoplight is Atherton Avenue.
You go from Middlefield through Glenwood, down Valparaiso, that's the big street, because it's a straight shot all the way through. How many people do, and right, people pass on that road and they're going fifty miles, forty-five, fifty miles an hour, you know, the police are out there regularly and I've never seen a decoy out there.
And, and those little refuge lanes are.
They're scary.
They're effective, but they take nerve to use.
Well, and then the guy behind me is snugging up, you know, he's trying to get me to, you know.
Get in the safety zone.
And it's really all in room for my.
They're great for small cars, size it up.
I mentioned it just because if, if you do hire a consultant to look at this, I think that should be.
Good point, though.
That is a good point.
Okay.
Perfect staff, do we have enough on this?
I think so.
Another.
I don't know if you remember that we used to, when we wanted to go left on El Camino from Selby Lane, we had to go right. And then we went to the light and then we could turn. Making you, we can't do that now because they have two lanes coming from Fifth Avenue to come, go on to El Camino. If we could switch that back, first we back up traffic, I suppose, on Fifth Avenue. The other comment I want to make is there's a lot of traffic that comes at school, which you know. There is a lot of traffic when people get out of work that come on Selby Lane and they are going fast and there are lots of cars at that time.
And I think that that's what staff will be able to come to, good speed as well.
Get, get those twenty-four hour counts, so we can see the production issue.
I wish we could post private Atherton, you know, property, no cut through traffic. Isn't there one, something like that on Oak Grove going into Lindenwood at, on El Camino, at Middlefield at Menlo Atherton? So there is a sign, yes, there is.
Those are as effective as Berkeley's no new. Not enforceable, not enforceable.
But there is a sign, this is, you know, residential street, no cut through traffic.
Just put it on all our streets.
On all our streets.
Do not enter.
Why don't we discount?
Residents only. All right, I think staff's got enough on this, can we?
But have we given direction about exactly what we want to do?
I think Mike.
What I have is the, you want traffic information on Selby. You want us to talk with Caltrans, talk about scope and what it would cost to do a PSR for the lane reductions. And also explore with them as far as, you know, could they put it in their budget and, but we'll front the money now and get paid back later.
Because we want it done now.
And express urgency.
We want it done now. And then about the, about the bike.
No, it's been done.
We've got the bike lane.
And the bike lane.
Yes, yes.
But that's already underway.
I just, I was completing my Bike Master Plan.
That sounds correct to me. We're good, thank you very much.
Oh, and wait a minute, I just, shall we continue the research on the humps? Maybe a hump, one or two humps.
The humps.
Well, somebody should look into this.
The humps.
You know, John Regero, I guess it was Virginia, did the analysis and they sent everybody a copy. And they did have these rubberized humps, I don't know if they make the same noise, I think if they said that they were quieter or things like that. I know all the council members looked at them, yeah. Yeah, I know the council looked at them, but I'm not sure really.
No, we, we actually do that, there was, there's installations in Rapid City that we went and looked at. And they are, you know, some of these portable humps, they're not good because they're pieced together and they're really noisy. But the ones that John talked about, actually they're very good quality, but like all good quality, they're expensive. They, you know, we, we took a look at the cost and, you know, they were about twelve thousand dollars per manufactured hump. And, but, but as far as, you know, the, the traffic comes, I mean, really that doesn't require any study. But what if the council was interested in actually installing them, what it is going to require is, you know, working, meeting with the community. And, and again, to effectively reduce speeds, what we would, what we would take a look at is that segment of Selby from up here to Realto, I think it's Santa Cruz, wherever it, where it dead ends. And then, and we have enough experience with it to know, and based on where street intersections are, how many humps you would need in that segment of the street in order to, you know, to try to reduce speed. But, but again, our, our experience is, is that it is effective in reducing speeds, but only at the humps.
Perhaps as part of, what's the Bike Master Plan? You have an idea where all these bike lanes are going to go and what some of that's going to cost or the budget process? We can come back and prioritize what you want to do with some of these humps if we were to go out and purchase some.
And if you're going to want to do some humps, my strong suggestion is you send staff out to measure the noise from these humps. Because you may find that we're going to violate our own noise ordinance if we install them. Because sixty decibels is not reliable. And, you know, remember to measure at the property line, so you're literally twenty, fifteen, twenty feet away from that hump is where you measure. And if we're exceeding sixty decibels, technically, we should be, we could be required to remove them after we pay for them.
And, and if, if we were interested in, you know, we couldn't, the council isn't interested in more than manufactured ones, we can certainly do that. But when I saw those costs, they were very similar and were, or maybe even a little more.
I just didn't know you looked at the asphalt.
Than these putting in the asphalt. And, and that's not the only cost also, I mean, there's strapping involved and then also you want to put, you need to put holes on, on the outside of the pavement at the humps to prevent cars from running around. So there's more of an expense other than just the, you know, asphalt or the manufactured humps.
Well, you have that also, the little humps that have the thing and people go off to the side so they have minimal. People that are parking there, their, their cars are.
I know, I drive down, we're on video, sorry. I drive down the middle of the road trying to catch those little tire.
You've got a wheelbase.
You've got an H B.
CSU M B has streets and streets of these things, because they have students there and it's, it's not, they're not public streets. So they can catapult what they want and use these plastic things. And I have a phenomenal air suspension in my car and I have to slow to five miles an hour or it throws you off the road. And these things are hideous, you can never drive over one of those with a police car or a fire truck or anything. I think you've got, whatever you want to do, find somebody that's got it and go out and, and test it.
Perfect. We're good on that. Go ahead and move on to item number two, City Council Handbook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have the handbook with the attachments and then you've got the red line versions as well. The code of conduct, there's no changes from August of last year, went to some in the council. The committee commission resolution, that says previously adopted by the council. Rosenburg's rules of order, they're not ours, so that's pretty much standard. And then you have relevant city council already adopted policies, the iPad policy, the purchasing policy, the key waiver policy. So the two primary items that we're talking about are the handbook itself and the rules of procedure. Staff went through the handbook, the city attorney and Teresa extensively, removed duplication and some inapplicable portions. Updated provisions so it's consistent with Rosenburg's rules of order and other things that we currently do. The major areas of change within the handbook, we removed the code of conduct and made that a separate document like it should be. We moved some special meetings and descriptions of meetings to an appropriate section of that handbook. Within the rules of procedure, we updated it so it's consistent with Rosenburg's rules of order. And we clarified the agenda preparation process to reflect the current process, colleagues memo, meeting with the mayor, talking about adding items to the agenda. We now meet regularly on a weekly basis and we've been doing that for about a year and a half now, so. That's the major things that are in there, but Teresa and the city attorney can talk about anything I may have missed.
On the computer thing, I remember when we went over it, but now I guess there's a list of software or something like that. Says, example, super software on the iPads. Then there's an adapter that you can plug in.
Where are you referring then?
It's on the IT, on the IT thirty.
Is it in the rules of procedure?
No, it's appendix C.
It's like the next to last thing.
Yeah, this, this page here has got.
Yeah, I don't remember if you've seen that before, so is that, is that available?
That was sent out with the iPad policy.
When we got started? Yeah, I think that's what you give them, but we're allowed to put on software on it as long as it doesn't violate many of our standards and as long as it doesn't create security.
The only other item is in the staff report, it's, and this has come up before when the handbook, actually it came up in a resolution form, probably about a year ago. And I've met with various council members and it's come up again in terms of a creating an nepotism policy for both council and staff. The town doesn't have one, many communities do. It would be part of our internal rules and handbook, so that's, it's not something for approval this evening, it's just an awareness that it will come up again for the council to consider approval later.
If we have questions about it, is it something to ask now or?
Certainly. There are a couple of.
It's on the cover, it's the back of the cover page of the staff.
Oh, yes, okay.
Sure. Okay, first question is, under the section, kind of the policy would read as follows, the italicized sections. The second paragraph kind of defines the policy. And my question is, what, what is normal for those cities that do have an nepotism policy? Is this, is this kind of standard?
It, it is kind of standard, yes.
Okay, that, that was the first question. And then in the, the section down toward the end of the page where there's the bullets.
Yes.
The last bullet says, I, I didn't understand this bullet exactly.
So it's basically talking about, you know, it's trying to, let's say, a Parks and Rec committee. Steve Tyler can't be related to a Parks and Rec committee member because he works with the Parks and Rec committee. Or nobody can be related to me that currently works for me or within my department, police chief, police employee.
Anybody in the seat?
Yeah, please.
Do we have that situation anymore?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I have dealt with it in other cities. Everyone, I've dealt with every one of these, in fact, in other cities. That's why I was, George actually did it and I was on board all of them.
And there's a, there's a typo in here on that second paragraph, says it is a policy of the town to restrict, where it says city council members, there should be a word two between members and committee. And then when the city attorney and I were talking about it, on that second paragraph where it defines relative, we would recommend eliminating everything after grandparents and put the word or in between grandchild and grandparent. But as it comes back, those, I mean, those are just typos of the policy.
Any other questions?
Lot of common, I think we discussed this several times before and I think that we each said that we didn't think that that was relevant at this point in time. And, you know, if the council makes a decision, I think that the council should be making a decision and we don't just keep coming back and coming back and coming back. It's indicated that a couple of council members said, hey, maybe we should consider it, city manager. And maybe they did, but we do have a policy for city council members trying to get things or changing policy. You know, I think the town is a small town and we have actually a pretty good history of, of a number of people volunteering and donating their time to the city, both on the council as well as, and, you know, and the mates. Of course, none of the people were paid, not of us are paid, well, not of us, not of the state. And, I mean, we had Fishers, you know, they both have served, we had the Olmans, they both run the art committee together, serving at the same time. The Crittintons, there have been others as well. You know, we sometimes, we go and ebbs and flows. Sometimes we have plenty of people to be on committees and sometimes like the environmental programs committee, we don't have enough. And, you know, I think that we need to do our best to let people who want to serve, serve. The council, and I think this is kind of how we left it last time, the council will make the decision in deciding the, their appointment. If you don't want to vote for somebody, then that's your choice. We don't have to give justification as to why we select somebody or we don't select somebody, so that's point number one. Point number two, from a employee standpoint and actually from, you know, I've worked in companies that have had similar processes. Oftentimes it's that you can't be in the direct line of support, so. So it could be somebody that works a, in the building department, if we owned our own building department, and we have a, a police officer. And, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily something that's bad or that's good, but traditionally.
That's allowed in this, unless I misread it.
No, you're, you're correct, it is, it says if the applicant is successful, is eligible, he or she may not be employed in a department or office in which a relative has defined the office.
So it is the direct reporting.
But we do have that situation, very situation in our city attorney's office where we have.
But they're not employed.
Thank God I'm not employed. Wrecked my law.
Motown payroll check.
So, I mean, that's my only point, that's my only point, is just that. So, I mean, that's my only point, that's my only point, is just that, you know, we have, oh yeah, I forgot the Carlsons, I mean, Carlsons as well, and I think it was Jerry who actually put a strong exception to, to, so, you know, look, my feeling is, there's lots of stuff that all of us don't agree with that gets voted on, but we don't just be breaking it up, and breaking it up, and breaking it up, you know, and I don't think this, you know, setting policy, which may be overly restrictive over a long period of time, and, and contradictory, you know, to the council making your own decisions, and you need staff, when you need to get a staff, or when people try, at least they're called to at that time, I think that that's, 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 we can get policy to direct that. So that's my comments, I'm sure that you accept, you anticipate it, I gave it to you yesterday, but in my current, I guess, I'm not going to continue on.
Yeah, I, I will step in a little bit, and say that, I know we haven't had a problem, and, and Bill, Bill says is one hundred percent correct, historically we've had a lot of great people, there have been volunteers, and, and members, and so, and so forth, and we've never had occasions, and still to date, we still don't have issues. But I think that after I got done with Sacramento personally, and spent the last day sitting there with a number of cities, and the perception, although I know historically we have had tides and valleys related to our number of volunteers, I think that, from what I gathered from cities throughout the state, it's the perception, I think, that does raise some concern on my part, that the transparency, is there a conflict, do people recuse themselves when they're supposed to recuse themselves? And I think that, you know, again, we haven't had, and I think that right now the tide is, is that cities have to be looking better in what the public may perceive, and we obviously haven't had a problem, but we're not judging us, they're judging us, and often they don't know what we're doing behind the scenes, and that, you know, the council member recuses himself for a particular reason, and, you know, leaves a room, they don't understand at times, so I think that with the policy, it may just, in fact, and maybe in time later, this policy does get removed, but I think that, you know, I think in general, I'm supportive of the fact that, you know, we have to be considered what the public perceives we're doing. I mean, he's not allowed to just say something, so, you know, the perception.
So my feelings are that we've kind of turned a corner here in Atherton with public perception and public trust and confidence in us as a council, and the number of highly talented people with vision and skills that want to be on our committees, and to be a part of our town government process, I think is growing steadily. I think, I don't think it's like it was in the past, when, you know, there weren't anybody that wanted to be on the Parks and Recs Committee, and Shirley Carlson was the only one, and then that was, she had been there, been there, been there, and then they appointed, the council appointed Jerry to fill a vacancy, because, you know, he was kind of, was qualified. So there's, there's issues that in the past that I don't think we have today, or I don't think we're going to have going forward. I think that we are going to have more people wanting to be part of what's happening in Atherton, and the future of Atherton, so that's my view.
And I, and I will stick with it, if, if, I know that we're going to have a loss, because there are a lot, I mean, you mentioned some really good people, I mean, and I know Bill and his wife themselves, the very good people who are very hard for this town, that's, you know, the, we're going to have some loss there, I mean, just like the Fishers, you know, there, there have been some major contributors that have been family members, but the other side of it is, is that we know the information, that side of the chair doesn't know, and it's that perception, and the concern of what do they think, is where I'm coming from with this. Rick? Well, I think it's a hard issue, I think it's hard because you're caught in the middle of it, so you can't totally speak your mind like you'd like to, and I'm sorry about that. I, I think that, you know, it's a tough issue, we are a small town, and we do want to encourage people to participate in any kind of way, and, and you get one family member that gets involved in the town, and it's very easy, because for the other family member to develop an interest, you know, I, I mean, I, I think that's natural, I, I don't want to discourage that. I think that the policy that is articulated here with respect to employees is really good and important. I think that it, I, I can see it also being a small town, and I'll bet it's happened in the past, that there have been people in supervisory positions that have had people reporting to them that are family members, and that can never be good. From our situation, I mean, I hear what you're saying in terms of public perception, especially with media the way it is today, information is, you know, all over the place, and, I mean, I hope that we're getting more people to come into the committees, I mean, we, we, I don't know how the response has been to these openings we have with the planning committee and, and the C C A C.
How's it been?
One for each.
One for each.
Yeah, I, I think that that has not been really publicized, and it's been-
Well, no, that was publicized the way we publicize anything, man.
What do you mean?
It's gone off, it was in the front page of the Athertonian as well.
And it was in the O M A, but-